And ask Janelle for a roll call.
Mayor Pippa?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Darb?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from the October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen Planning Commission meeting. Any changes or do I have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Proposal sign for Pizza Hut is number one on the agenda and we have some comments from our planner. And Janelle came in a good voice tonight, so could you please read those?
Pursuant to your request, I have reviewed an application from Elet Science to replace and reimage the face of the existing Pizza Hut sign located at six thirteen East Aurora Road. To my knowledge, the area of the sign is not increasing with this proposal. The existing sign is four points over two feet and eight feet, thirty-five point thirty-six square feet, and it maintains a twenty-foot setback from East Aurora Road. Based on my review of the proposal, which includes a sign illustration dated May twenty-four, two thousand thirteen, following comments to the Planning Commission are acceptable or applicable. Section eleven seventy-nine point zero seven B of the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code permits a maximum area of forty square feet per monument sign. And the proposal is to maintain the existing area, which is slightly larger than the thirty-five square feet. Therefore, the sign complies with the area limitations of the Planning and Zoning Code. Section eleven seventy-nine zero seven C of the code requires that the sign be set back from the road right away at distance equal to the height of the sign at five feet, whichever is greater. Unfortunately, the sign illustration does not provide the height of the sign, but I believe it is reasonable to assume that the height of the sign is less than ten feet. Given the fact that a twenty-foot setback is being provided, the sign surely complies with the code requirement. The applicant should confirm his assumption prior to approval. Considering the facts he told us to report, I believe the proposal to reimage the existing sign can be approved as admitted. Please feel free to contact me with any questions.
All right. Are there any other comments? I don't believe we have anyone here tonight from Pizza Hut. Okay, and not having anyone here, many times we hold back until we have somebody, but this is pretty much cut and dried. Does the commission have any problems with moving forward?
No, I think we looked at that, the sign height setback when they came in a couple of years ago and redid their signage.
Okay, so this is just a new phase for the sign. Any other comments from anybody? No? About the commission? Comments, questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is proposed plan to change Longwood Manor. All right, John Connor. All right, John, you want to come down and cast him? How about John Connor, are you there?
No.
No, nobody's John Connor.
This is our architect, David Smith, that I've been sitting up here also.
What's your name, David, please? I've been hearing good things about you, Dave, and you're a co-ops.
He has been, he's been a huge help to us on this, for us to get here. This is really a historic moment for us and we're going to present a historic house to you here. We are a group of non-paid volunteers, we don't need no money. We are doing this, the restoration of Longwood Manor totally on a donation basis. And Mr. Smith, by the way, also did a roof plan on the roof. We have the roof repaired and we have the foundation watered through on the house. See, this house is-
Before you go on, all right, we have some, a memorandum from the planner. So I know you want to get into it, but what we need to do, since this is a, yeah, since this is a planning commission, we've received your drawings. We've also received from you and noted your statement of intent. So before we move forward with that, we've got quite a few comments from our planner. Janelle, can you make it all the way through this, please?
Pursuant to your request, I have reviewed an application for the Longwood Manor Historic Society dated October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. The applicant is proposing to utilize the first and second floors of the existing building for tours and nonprofit activities, including wedding receptions, private parties and meetings, arts crafts displays, and various other similar events. Additionally, the proposal includes utilizing the existing upper patio off of the dining room for various related events as described above. The main is situated on the grounds of Longwood Park and the property is zone R-one Residence District. My analysis is based upon a site plan dated October eleventh, two thousand thirteen, and a letter of explanation dated date stamped October seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. My comments regarding the use in the site plan are summarized below. Section eleven sixty-three oh two of the Planning and Zoning Code provides a list of permitted uses for lands located in the R-one district. Amongst the permitted uses are single-family homes, churches, schools, and other public buildings. Also within the R-one district, certain retail stores, restaurants, administrative offices, recreational uses, community facilities, and planned unit developments are conditionally permitted pursuant to the regulations set forth in section eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code. In my opinion, I don't believe the proposal by the Historic Society is a permitted use as defined above. The conditionally permitted community facilities as provided in the R-one district is the most closely related use to the district provided by the applicant. However, I believe the proposal is most related to a banquet hall or club use, which is conditionally permitted in the B-one, B-two zoning districts and permitted in the B-three district. The Planning Commission has options related to this request. First, the commission can determine that the proposal does not comply with any of the permitted or conditionally permitted uses in the R-one district. In such case, the use is not permitted. Second, the commission can determine that the proposal fits into the community facility classification and thus is a conditionally permitted use in the R-one district. If this determination is needed, then the applicant will need to seek conditional zoning certificate pursuant to the requirements set forth in section eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code. Finally, the commission can make the determination that the proposal is a permitted use under the R-one district. If the commission makes a determination that the proposal falls within the permitted use of the R-one district, then the only additional action by the commission relates to approval of the site plan. Off-street parking. The applicant is proposing to construct thirty-two gravel off-street parking spaces to accommodate the variety of uses being proposed. The thirty-two spaces are now all contained in one parking lot. Sixteen spaces are provided along the existing gravel driveway for Route eighty-two, and the remaining sixteen spaces are proposed in a new parking lot alongside the building. She wanted the site plan contains an analysis of the required parking and I confirm these figures to be accurate. The code requires forty-four off-street parking spaces and only thirty-two are being proposed. Section eleven seventy-one eleven D of the code does provide a way to reduce required parking for combined use of facilities and the hours of operation for the various use to not conflict. An example of this, if the proposed museum is closed during the time of private parties occurring, the spaces for museums can be used for the party. This approach of combined or shared parking must be approved by the Planning Commission with proper documentation of the parking utilization supplied by the applicant. If the shared parking provision is not used, applicant will need to seek interference from the Board of Zone Appeals for the parking deficiency. Regarding parking, the proposal is to use gravel for the off-street parking spaces. The code requires a hard surface, petuminous concrete or concrete free of dust from parking lots and business and industrial districts. Unfortunately, the code is silent regarding non-residential uses in residential zoning districts. If the Planning Commission requires a conditional zoning certificate with this proposal, the type of parking surface could be stipulation of a conditional approval and the commission could require the off-street parking spaces be hard surface rather than gravel.
All right, very good. Now we had some comments from Nick.
There was an updated comment from Brian as well.
Oh, yes, that, I forgot, go ahead.
Please consider the brief memorandum in connection with my October twenty-two thousand thirteen report. I previously noted section eleven seventy-one eleven E being a requirement for commercial and industrial use only. However, the code does have language at the end of section eleven seventy-one fifteen that states non-residential uses are required to follow construction standards set forth in the eleven seventy-one eleven E unless approved by the Planning Commission. This technical performance standard does not impact issue or whether the use is permissible in the R-one district, but it does open an opportunity for the commission to waiver the hard surface parking requirement. In my seven years of working for the city, I don't recall an instance of the provision being applied.
Okay. Now, some comments from Nick.
Proposed use plan change to Longwood Manor at sixteen thirty-four East Aurora Road. For eleven seventy-one fifteen, off-street parking shall be provided and shall comply with all construction standards in section eleven seventy-one eleven E unless otherwise approved by the Planning Commission. Surface material, all parking areas and driveways shall be hard surface, petuminous concrete or concrete. Curving, a safety curve, a minimum of six inches high, bumper blocks or other suitable means shall be used to protect the vehicle from any pedestrian walkway, building equipment, landscaping, or other facility requiring protection from vehicle traffic. Lighting, parking areas shall be lighted to allow for safe movement of both vehicular and pedestrian traffic.
Dave, do you have a copy of all this?
Not at all.
You need to get something for Dave.
Mr. Mayor, we seem to have a major disconnect right off the bat here. We have been operating under this, the assumption that this property was rezoned commercial, it is not residential. That is the purpose of the change of use that was required, that Mr. Smith has undergone several meetings with the Building Department over the past couple of months about this and been in a lot of communication with them as far as what, what requirements we are operating under. We are not residential. We are, we are zoned commercial. That is, that was the whole basis of what the Building Department's discussion with our architect and with us has been about.
John?
So I don't understand.
The property is zoned R-one.
That is not what we have been told. We were told it is rezoned commercial.
The confusion is with the building code that has the change of use.
Okay.
Okay, you're taking the residence, former residence, and using, going through the change of use to make it into something commercial use, but the zoning of the property is still R-one.
So it hasn't been changed?
What, what violations were these violations in two thousand seven issued under? Were they not commercial violations code, violations of the commercial code, not the residential? We were out, we were occupying this house, Longwood Manor Historical Society, up until two thousand seven. We were, this was before my time, but at that point, the city came in and said the house had been rezoned commercial, there was an inspection, violations issued under that, and the house was closed to the public in two thousand seven because of that, because it did not meet the commercial zoning requirements. It, it has been used as a museum, we had, there's been public tourists through there since the mayor died in nineteen eighty-three and he willed this house to the city of Macedonia along with his acreage, along with his farm. It's been maintained by a couple of historical societies before the one I'm involved with. It has been open since then. There was, there's even an occupancy sign, which I know our architect said he saw also on the third floor saying maximum occupancy, forty-nine persons. That, that's, was in the house. It has been opened since then and it was not until the city said the house was rezoned commercial that they said we couldn't occupy it and they put the fence around it and closed it down.
Well, you know what, John, we're not here to argue. Alls we're here to do is tell you as a planning commission which deals with zoning. That's our job. If something comes in and it doesn't comply to the zoning, that will be brought to our attention by a professional. We don't tell that professional what to say. Now, Dave, you haven't had a chance to look all this stuff over yet, I understand, all right? But this is his opinions of the situation the way it is. Now, in your mind, you have opinions that it's been commercial right along, the zoning is R-one, all right? But the zoning for, right here where the city hall is, is R-one, all right? We have to deal with what is allowed and what's not allowed in an R-one district. If you are trying to get around the zoning, usually you go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the Board of Zoning Appeals is the one that decides if you can make changes. So tonight, we're dealing with the zoning as it stands where that building is, in discussions with the Building Department, and there's been many between Dave, because I hear about him. And I also hear how you're, you're walking very, very well, so that's great, that's what it's got to be. We have to have this dialogue back and forth. So tonight, we're not here to talk about all the embellishment of the fact that this is the Colonel's home and this is, it has special meaning to you and all the rest of those things. Here, we're about nuts and bolts in the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission deals with zoning, zoning issues as recommended to us by a professional, all right? This is nothing personal or saying, well, you're crazy for even trying. No, we're not saying any of that. This is strictly, all right, in this district, this is what's allowed and what I recommend. Now, Dave, you want to say something?
It is, you're, you're, is this an employer or a consultant?
He's a contractor.
Okay, so he's saying it's zoned R-one. This district is zoned R-one, okay. And, John, I think your confusion is that sometimes comments have been coming down from the city on the basis of the use of the building under the Commercial Building Code. And that's where a lot of-
Exactly, yes.
And what we're talking about here is a land use issue rather than a building use issue. So I, I think that maybe, I wasn't aware it was zoned R-one, but-
We have been operating, I mean, we've been operating all summer, we've been working with the Building Department, we've got plans in force and we thought, that's why we were trying to do all this diligence before, so that we were in compliance and I thought we were in understanding with the Building Department. Apparently, we were not, because when I, I have the tape of the meeting from July and I'm going to study that again, because this was never presented this way, that this was a re, if this is a residence, why, why was the, why was the house closed in two thousand seven? Why was this house even closed?
Because there was no funding left to this home, John, and we're not going to get into all that kind of stuff right now. You're at a planning commission meeting. We're not going to go back to the arguments that have been had over the years, that there's no funding for this house and that's why I was- Don't interrupt me, please.
I didn't interrupt you because I am not accepting this. I'm not accepting what you, what the people are-
What do you think, commission?
Where do we go from here? Can I have a question?
Sure.
I mean, I have a question for you.
I haven't accepted any of this, okay?
Have you, you've been, I know that you've been working with the Building Department and everything. They kind of pretty much have directed you as to what to do, as coming here before us. What exactly have you guys all been discussing? Because I understood that this was going on, that you were going to be coming here before us, that they hired you and you've been working with them so that you can get all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed and stuff so they can move forward. They are on a deadline and council has permitted and waived a lot of fees for them. And I just want to hear what you have to say, who you've been working with and what exactly have they told you that you need to do to come before us?
Well, our last meeting in July that we had, they just mentioned that there's a planning commission parallel that has to be processed, it has to be reviewed in conjunction with whatever it is that the Building Department does with their regulation of the occupancy of the building itself, for fire safety. So they mentioned that in July and so we basically hustled up our plans and brought them in here for your review on a land use basis. I understand what you're saying. I do. But, you know, the Building Department and I have been talking on the basis of the building occupancy, the fire safety issues.
When you talk to the Building Department, all right, you don't necessarily, it's reflected of what the planner recommends. The planner makes recommendations to the Planning Commission.
Right.
The engineers make recommendation. The, one of the things that you were questioning about Dave was purpose. That was important. What would be the purpose? Why would you, what would you intend to do with this house? Give the city a purpose? What is it going to be used for? In a letter here that I received on the seventeenth from John, it says that you would like to use it for weddings, receptions, graduations, private parties, meetings, holidays, celebrations. Okay, that's your intent, is to use it for that. Your intent also mentions things that are more engineering or architectural types of steps that have to be followed, but the Planning Commission reviews things for their usage in the R-one district. If the Planning Commission is unable to give that okay, that authorization, you have other options. You can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I, I understand where it really is at.
I do not understand. What do we need to do, Mr. Mayor?
What do you need to do? Well, the first thing you do, the first thing you need to do is sit there and not argue with it.
I'm not arguing with you.
You're, you're speaking over me very disrespectfully.
I am not talking disrespectfully. I am speaking for a lot of citizens, for people in this community that have donated money, that we have refixed the roof, we have gotten huge amounts of help from contractors to, to repair this house, and it was my assumption we were in the right direction.
You're in the right direction, why are you fighting? You have to go through this process. That's why you're here.
We thought we were-
You brought your plans and our planner has made-
I, what is-
Mr. Mayor, may I say, if I can, if I can-
Yes, please.
If we could take a step back, your, your report shows that you had three options. I mean, they're proposing, your consultants proposing that you had three options based on what's on. And to get to maybe a next step, do any one of those three options sit well with the commission in terms of how the building could be used in the R-one district that it is zoned?
It says here to be used for that, from what he's saying here.
Yeah, but the second option, pardon me?
I'm sorry, I don't think he's saying could.
If you read the second option, is the commission can determine that the proposal fits into the community facility classification, thus conditionally permitted in R-one. So if it was, if it fit that definition in, in an R-one, then we, with its approval of the board, we would consider requesting a conditional use approval for that purpose.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I-
So why, why are we being belittled because we're here to go through that process?
I, I don't feel-
I think we just got, I think we had a misunderstanding.
I don't feel belittled.
I'm trying to represent-
You don't feel belittled because you weren't mentioning this.
I, I'm saying-
I, I just have to control this meeting. I am the chairman, John, all right?
I think the condition is we should try and-
All right, so if that's the case, please, don't get all upset. Don't start yelling at me. What are we doing this for? These are the steps-
That's not true, I'm not yelling at you.
Okay.
What can we, what are you saying? What can this house be used for? You're saying it's already, it has to be a private residence? I, I don't understand.
John, who else is here?
I really don't. I'd like to-
Let me, let me take a-
Explain what you're, what we're talking about here.
What we're talking about is we have to deal with the zoning issues as the Planning Commission. And these are the recommendations, but the decision is this board. All right, now you might not like that, and that's not what you have been told to this point, but this is reality.
I don't understand what you're saying.
You don't understand what I'm saying? Let Dave explain.
I, look, I'm representing a group of people here, okay?
You're representing them and I'm representing the city and the people of this city and the laws of this city.
You should be talking to me, though. I mean, you should be addressing me. We're the ones that have been working on this house, that are trying to have it reopened for the public. And, and we're, I don't know what we're into here with, with-
We're into the law.
I, I have a question. Going through all of this, when do you, if this fits, okay? When do you propose to open?
When we get the violations fixed and when we get an occupancy permit and we'd like to lease it from the city.
These plans are basically the only plans we've received? I mean, do we have, well, if, if this fits, then you have to go to eleven thirty-seven oh four, conditional use permit. It's fine, except you've got location and height of existing and proposed building and structures, accessory buildings and uses, off-street parking and loading areas. It goes on and on, adjacent streets, adjacent property, including buildings. This all has to be on a set of plans, it has to be-
Yeah, now, the, the conditional use approval process is, is understood. I understand, there's a whole nother layer that goes on. So, now, we're, we're in the same boat with that. You know, of the three options that they gave, even the last one suggested that the Planning Commission could consider whether this use meets the land use for R-one. So the three options were not at all, I believe was the first one, the second one would be a conditional use approval process, the third one would be flat out meets the requirement. So, you know, whatever the board feels, the commission feels is the best route to go, I think is the way we should go.
Well, they're, we informed of this months ago. I mean, when we started this-
Community facilities and planned unit developments are conditionally permitted pursuant to the regulations set forth in section eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code. Is that what you're referring to now?
I'm, I'm sorry, I got a little confused.
Well, it says, "Community facilities and planned unit developments are conditionally permitted pursuant to the regulations set forth in section eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code." Is that the one you're referring to?
I would have to say, I'm shooting from the hip, I don't have a major-
Well, because that's allowed in the R-one district.
Yeah, then I would say so. I would say so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So now we're talking about an R-one district.
Correct, that's correct.
That's why we're here.
Sure, sure.
I don't know how we keep ending up into an argument over how hard the committee's been working. It's not that, we're here to discuss what the options are.
The, the third option is a stretch, I'm sensing.
Kind of thing, so there's, yeah, those, single-family homes, churches, schools, other public buildings.
So it's flat out not a consideration for-
I guess I'm not sure what other public buildings are necessarily considered. I'm thinking like city hall, police station, fire station, service building. I don't know that this would be considered another public building.
Well, now, John has made mention in here in the last paragraph, upon completion of the necessary building and safety violations in the manor, it's your intent to obtain an occupancy permit and lease home for ninety-nine years. That's all well and good, similar to the model of the Hen Mansion in Euclid Man, on Euclid, Ohio. I, the manor will be maintained totally on a nonprofit basis through public donations, all right? So I called to find out about the Euclid Manor two days ago and how it runs and what it's about, and they haven't gotten back to me. But I did, from their website, get some pictures and some-
Thank you.
Information about the fact that, yes, it's used for what it- Information about the fact that yes, it's used for what it is and it's used. This is the hen house that was referenced. All right, it's a mansion and it, it has absolutely beautiful.
Bob Hopkins, he took us there.
Yeah.
Do you know what this was, when this was put in service for these kinds of places? When it left the mansion or the residential stage and entered more of a public assembly?
Over the years, Dave, the problem has been that the funding mechanisms were never properly addressed. There were many, many groups, and I was actually part of those.
Oh, you're talking about Longwood, not this? That, that's what I was just asking about this one, if you knew when this one was.
No, I can't get anybody to call me back. I'm so fine. So I have a lot of questions regarding that. I have questions that require answers from the legal because, um, and I don't have that back yet, but our lawyer has been very, very busy. Um, on the seventeenth, when I got this, um, this is what the city asked you to do, and you complied. So, okay, now this is what you'd like to use it for, all right? Um, can we do that according to law? Well, I haven't gotten an answer back yet. By law, I mean, the will is involved, all these other things are involved. Can we do this? I don't know why we wouldn't be able to do this in my mind because there are certain things that have happened at Two Club Golf across the street. They did some gathering in their basement and so forth. That's also zone R one. So we're not here to vilify you and, and we're just trying to work it out. First of all, this is R one. What are the uses that are permitted? That has all been explained in the planner's report.
See, I wonder if I would use it in Harlan's set?
Well, I.
Just to have it open to the public upon the tours.
And going back by memory, the problems that could not allow it to be used and the reason the city bought that was because of, of the fact that it had to be handicap accessible and all the rest of these type of things that are laws now that weren't laws when this building was first given to the city.
There are a slew of building code issues that are completely different layers separate from this process that we'll have to get through.
Yeah, and.
They have to go side by side between the land use discussion here at the commission and then with the building department, the actual occupancy of the building.
So we are here tonight to simply discuss the options that we have in an R one district. And this is an R one district. I know you're talking about doing certain things and that all of those things are conditional. What we're doing is we're going by the book. The book says it has to go before planning commission, and the planning commission is going to question you, and we're going to ask you, how are you going to make this um so that it's more compliant? For instance, an issue was the gravel parking lot. We don't have any gravel parking lot. Would this planning commission be able to be talked into having a planning, a, a gravel parking lot? Well, I'm not the whole planning commission, John. You have other people here. So everything that happens here goes up to a vote, and we make decisions as to what we need to see. We made a decision about a sign, and that was a no-brainer because nothing really changed except the face. So that's pretty easy. This is more complex because of how it's zoned. That's all we're saying.
And then you're going to be coming back and before us for other things, correct? So, I mean, right now, we're just doing a conditional.
Well, are we considering, considering a conditional at this time?
Yeah, we made that motion because that will be all addressed because I did put another email into our, um, our planner, Brian France, because I do have a question regarding the parking and lighting. Uh, this is city-owned property, and I was curious, does that relate to us or does that relate to the manor house? And I don't know that answer, so.
I'm sorry, the, when you say us, versus the.
The city. This, I don't know if, because they're addressing parking lot and they're addressing uh lighting and so forth. Well, that's city-owned property.
Okay.
Okay, so I put an email back to Brian, our city, our, our planner, and I have a question about that because I don't know.
Well, and that's, that's a very good point. Uh, yeah, you're right. Uh, and we can draw a comparison since we have an existing facility across the street, but it's different.
Right.
All right, because the facility across the street doesn't even have lights on the driving range or any way that they can do any operation after dusk. Well, you can actually have a reception in the evening. You can have a meeting in the evening.
Well, I think lighting, lighting, just from a safety standpoint, will have to be addressed in some manner.
Well, that's why it's all being mentioned, Dave.
And.
There are spotlights outside the house.
In the, in the matter of uh the parking, uh, if there is a, a pay, I, I'm familiar with that part of the code. I agree there is a hard paving requirement. And to go and pursue a, a gravel parking lot, would that be a variance with the Board of Zoning Appeals or would that happen through the planning commission as well?
Well, the planning commission has not approved of gravel parking lot in the last seventeen years.
Okay, but it's so it's your jurisdiction then. It's the planning commission's jurisdiction to determine whether they would, they could be allowed to use gravel parking versus a hard surface. It's all here in this commission where we get to the point where.
The, the people that come before this commission are businesses that are coming into town wanting to put up a building, wanting to put up a parking lot. Okay, and we treat them all very much the same. These are the way, this is the way it works. We get memorandums from the planning commission and then we ask them, would you be willing to do this? Would you be willing to do this? So these are some of the considerations the manor house has to make, all right? Because if you're going to move forward, just like any business coming into town, we would like to, you to do it so that we're not creating something that could lead to liability problems.
Sure. So, uh, what do you think is the best way to go as of today? Uh, where we can, if we need to go back and regroup, get more information to you, that we could do it as.
Well, what I would do is, to make this easy and keep away from any arguments to make it strictly business, is I would make a recommendation that you review these and have what you would like to try for out of this. So if we would table this today, you can come back to the next, another meeting in two weeks.
Well, I think with all of this information. Yeah, I think with all this information, we would need to do just that, to table it. I would like to just quickly, again, just talking, I mean, it really sounds like right off the bat that that second option, the conditional use permit, permitted, conditional use is the wayward.
Community facilities and planned unit developments are conditionally permitted pursuant to the regulations set forth, section eleven thirty seven oh four of the code, and that's, that's okay in an R one district.
Yeah, but this isn't a P U D or anything like that. This is, this is something that normally goes into a B one, two, or three. However.
Two Club across the street.
Yeah.
Is able to do the same thing. They have different functions over there. They're doing the same thing in an R one, so.
Okay, and they do it, they, if they did it right, they would be doing another conditional use.
Oh, yeah, probably. I wasn't there at the time, but.
Michael, in there, just.
So.
If I went back, I'll check it for you a little bit.
So what you need to do is you need to come up with a plan to address these comments and the comments from the engineer.
Right, now, the, the, my, my, just if I can tell you all one last time on the parking because I know that's going to be a real big expense for the historical society.
Well, it's all gonna, to make that building look like the penthouse, right there in front of you.
We have to provide a certain amount of paved parking and accessibility guidelines, so that we will do. Uh, but the rest of the parking, boy, I'll tell you, once you put down pavement, then you gotta put down storm management, and it gets, it kind of gets really, really expensive. So, I'm not asking you to decide. It's just when we come back, it's likely going to be with the request to be able to do a gravel parking lot for the majority of the parking.
Over the years that I've been sitting in this seat, whenever the planner makes recommendations, we consider all the recommendations that we make, and we go along with we, what we were told by experts. So many this, decisions that are made here are made off of these memorandums from the engineer and the plan. As far as our personal opinions, that's not supposed to enter into this. Can we do this? And I need one more. I need input from some other people. I need input from, uh, the penthouse. I need input from our law department. I need to know, you know, one of the fundamental things with this whole project is funding. Funding is key. Boy, it would be nice if you had federal funds that you could guarantee that all these things will be done in a manner that'll be no problem.
I think we have demonstrated that we're getting the needed support.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're getting community support from something. But will that be enough to rebuild and maintain this home so that it can be open? Now, you want to be nonprofit, all right?
Correct. We are not paid, and we will, we will get funding from, like, Akron Community Foundation. Uh, we have gotten funding from them, so.
Well, you know what? Why don't you start putting all of those funding mechanisms down on paper? Because I've never seen anything other than some of our local builders, uh, doing favors more than anything for you in that they go there and they do something. But that's not a revenue stream, okay? That's not something that you can say, well, we're going to do all this, but we really can't afford to pave it, and we really can't afford to put up lights, and we really can't afford sprinklers, and we really can't. I mean, see how important funding becomes.
Well, yes.
And that was the problem with the city when it changed from when I was going there, that let's fix it up as it is, to, well, now we want to fix it up so that we can have people come in. Once you do that, you cross the line in that there are things in place to protect those people going in there that have to be addressed.
I understand that. Do we have it, do we have everything here, Mr. Mayor?
This is the planners and you don't have the engineers. There's three sheets.
Okay, I'm trying to understand how this process moves forward though, and who has input here and who, and who doesn't. Uh, I, I, you seem to be, uh, very much on, online with, with, uh, Mr. Smith. He's an architect. So how do we move forward with this? Is, uh, when you say to come back to the planning commission, what do we have to have ready? How do we know what we're?
Mr. Smith didn't, um, pretty much tell you what you're going to need, John. Seriously, he's.
Okay.
He said, "We're going to table this. We're going, well, we're going to make a motion, right? To table this, like Mr. Smith suggested."
Three voting members here in your, you're going?
Okay, I'm.
No.
Four voting members.
Oh, four, um, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So.
So you, there's four voting members and.
So he's going to.
Advisors and.
To come back and under the R one to do, uh, just to get a conditional and then move forward with everything else that you have to do. Because you're going to have to come back before planning a bunch of times.
In fact, it's not unheard of that the planning commission many times has public hearings.
Fine.
You have to have.
Boy, are these plans going to be, I mean, we've, we're ready into, uh, this, uh, Mr. Smith's time and efforts here. He's been a huge help to us. Are, are these plans good? The plans and the drawings there good?
No, John, they, they, they have to be revised. They have to be revised.
These have to be even better? And we didn't know that? We, we weren't aware of that?
Well, that's why you come to planning.
Okay, I thought, uh, we were.
And when you come to planning commission, well, no, when you come to planning commission, the planner will say things about things like landscaping, and the planner wants to see landscaping on that drawing. All right, so you have your basic drawing. You know how things are to be laid out. But he's asking, well, if you're going to do it, you have to do it by the book.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's why I'm asking. Now you're coming, there's some other requirements, landscaping.
It's all in here.
There in these, in these pages that I have here?
The, uh, the, the method he uses in calculating parking, uh, is just somebody had to talk to you directly. I'm just curious.
Yep.
I don't remember that number.
Trying to come up with this?
Well, I, I can, I've got that out of the.
Where did you get this?
Well, I got that out of the cookbook, and I just wanted to.
What cookbook?
The zoning code, and he, he used a different basis, and so I just wanted to.
Yeah, Brian France, who you need to contact, and maybe to.
Can I get another copy of, uh, all the comments that came down?
Can I get a copy? Oh, this is, this, I'm sorry, I took your comments.
This is your copy.
All right, Terry, it's actually three pages from the plan, okay? Those are yours.
Oh, thank you.
That's three pages from him. There's one page from the engineer. That's the.
Well, I don't have. Okay, I don't have that.
All right, yeah, you have a, you have a recommendation.
I may have that back because I'm still waiting to talk and for them to call me because it's so nice that you made reference to an example. I can call an example and say, how do you get your funding? And maybe that's going to be a way for you to investigate because that's my first question.
Yeah, we went there to Bob Hopkins. We saw the house. They, uh, I have a whole, I, I'm going to give you, uh.
Bob Hopkins should be on your, your committee.
I'm going to give you a copy. I'll send that to, uh, Diane. I don't know if you have this.
No, no, that wasn't included.
I can't give it to you now. It's the only copy I got.
Does the, uh, this, I'm sorry, I asked this before, I don't know. Planning commission vote on, uh, variance from the zoning code?
Well.
Variance request.
Well, let's put it this way, uh, conditional uses, we can work with, uh, we can, we can approve something with conditions. All right, so in other words, um, um, we'll approve a, a lot drawing, a plat, and say, uh, this plat is, um, we understand that there's going to be a high brick wall that's going to block the parking from the street. You won't see the cars, so you don't need to put the landscaping there. But you need to put landscaping in back of the building. So that's a conditional approval. So we have conditions listed that, well, you need to do this, you need to do that. If you comply with all these things, you have planning commission approval. If you don't, it stops.
But if variances, do you have to go to them?
Yeah, variance is different than this.
Variance, so there is a Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes.
That, um, what comes, I imagine conditional use approval would come first. And if, then if we wanted variances from the, from the zoning code, i.e. the gravel parking lot.
Yeah.
We would need to go to them, and you'd probably make the recommendation, one or the other, to the B Z A.
Yes. You've, you've met all the conditions of the planner or the engineer, and the planning commission says, okay, we can go along with this. In fact, we have so, it's, it's not at all unusual for it to go to the planning commission first, and the planning go to B Z A.
That's why I must, wanted to get all your processes down, so that.
Well, it says here, "With proper documentation of the parking utilization supplied by the applicant. If shared parking provision is not used, the applicant will need to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the parking decisions."
I think that the shared parking would be in the questions you want to ask Brian. How do you get those numbers?
Yeah, I don't know where those numbers, that seems like.
You can, just look it over.
Seems kind of high.
Well, I, I think going on, uh, occupancy formats and how many people you'll be expected to have in the building, there's a formula follows.
Uh, yeah, and I saw that on the zoning, and that I used. Uh, it was kind of, it was kind of wishy-washy because I had a mixed use that basically a building that we'd like to be able to get forty-nine people in to use for functions and the like. But then I also had a whole museum criteria in terms of calculated parking space that I went to as well. So I went with kind of like a hybrid both. So I just am curious where you, where he got his number, and we'll go with it. I mean, I have a.
And, and, and as you go through this process, John, you could very well embellish and change what your intended use is.
Well, it sounds like we may have to, based on what you're saying about being zoned R one residential.
Well, yes, but if you read that, it says there's conditional approval that can be given, all right? The conditional approval is not guaranteed. The conditional approval is not guaranteed. It can be considered.
And Mr. Mayor, where do I get these, all these planning permissions?
Well, first of all, our codified ordinances tell us what the laws are. And the planner interprets all the laws. What we're reading from eleven point seven four and all the rest of those are laws. And he interprets that. That's what we pay him for. He interprets it and gives us what we, what he thinks that has to have to comply.
That does Mr. Smith have to talk to him?
I'd like to.
I think that's a good idea.
I think the parking, the parking where he's.
Can you folks call in, give his number?
Yeah, we can. Just contact Kayla at the building department, we'll get it for you.
Janelle, give it to, to, right?
Either, I'll find it. I just want to be able to call.
Yeah, because Janelle is our secretary now, so.
And I think he's getting the parking's with the forty-four. I mean, that's your total combined for your three different uses is forty-four? Twenty-nine plus thirteen?
Oh, well, you know, I.
That's where he's getting the share.
That's where he's getting his total number of forty-four.
Oh. That's right. And I kind of consider them, well, they're not really a boat happening at the same time.
And that's, that's where he's getting that if we've got the shared, uh, shared.
That's the share.
Yeah.
I was thinking, I was using it from the video store next door.
Because if you're having some activity there with forty-nine people, you're probably not using it as a museum at the same time.
That's correct.
You know, it's gonna be either the twenty-nine plus two or it's gonna be thirteen plus two.
I get, I didn't mean to pick.
I would think we'd have scheduled times we might be open, for example, for tours.
Yeah, but you probably have more tours the same time.
Not at the same time, you don't want more than you have to.
Right, I know we have that limitation.
So that, I mean, that might be something that we might be open to considering issues. What's the plan to do with it?
One final question I have, Mr. Mayor. We are in the process of getting on the historic registry in Ohio, okay? Now, from what I understood from Mr. Smith, that when the house is classified historical under the Ohio Building Commission thirty-four twelve, I believe it is, we get some leeway there in some of the requirements.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not written that way, John. It's written that there's some latitude.
Right.
It's not written that you get leeway.
Right.
So again, like this is conditional. These are conditions that you could work on. There are latitude. Being historical, I'll tell you what, get to be historical because I can see getting funding a whole lot easier.
Yeah, we don't have on the national registry. We'll get that class in the house, okay? Hopefully in December. We've got everything in. They only do this every six months is when they review the nomination, so December. We're up for nomination and, you know.
Look, I hope you do that because if you do, that's gonna open a door for funding. The problem ended up being all over funding. And it came to a head in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when the city had police sleight of. So funding has been an issue right along. Without funding, sure, it's great to get people like you and giving them a good price and doing what you're doing, that's very commendable. But to get it to the finished point where it can stand up to the scrutiny it needs to so that it'll be safe and it'll be within the limits and the parameters set by the city, that's the goal. And it's, to get to those parameters, it's not all about, you know, our. We're just telling you, this is what this man recommended. Now you have to try and address what he recommended so you fit within the picture.
It sounds like, it's up to our architect a lot of this. Am I correct here that you're gonna continue this process?
I'm gonna continue the process, yes.
And your architect?
No guarantee.
Has had a good working relationship and there have been in the past, there haven't been. So I consider that very important, Dave, that at least you're working with our building department.
That is. He's been huge for us. He's gotten some of our input. I hope we can, I hope we can keep in touch here so we know what we're, what to expect with.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so are you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Want to go for it?
No, you want one, yes.
Flip a coin. I'll make a motion to table this applicant until further.
When you're ready to come back, until you're ready to come back with some answers.
Can I get something more definite than that?
At next meeting is fine.
Yeah, you know, that's about as definite as, you know, they're not denying it. They're tabling it for further discussion and that's what we've been doing for the last.
How long, do you have any estimate, Dave? What do you think your timeframe is here?
I'd like to get back here in a month. I'd like to get back here in a month, but I will talk to you later about that, John.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Alright, Dave, next meeting is.
Okay.
We'll see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, John. Alright, we have only one item left on the agenda tonight. And that has come about because we have had some issues in the past. And today's another good example of this where we have a planner's comments only days before we actually have the planning commission meeting. So the thought is, and I don't know how you feel about this, but if we go back to having meetings once a month and request that the planner's comments come to us a week ahead of the meeting and go to the applicant a week ahead of the meeting. What do you think?
I guess it all depends on, then you're gonna probably move back their required time, which is middle. You just come down.
Yeah, we were thinking we'll move it to three weeks ahead of time. Yes, the middle will be three, that's why it's been at other cities that I've taken plans to.
Right.
Yeah, so yeah, as long as everybody's given sufficient amount of time. Because I know at one point you were asking everyone the things, so.
Well, yeah.
I heard Sam, Brian doesn't get your.
Right, well, Brian was explaining to me there in the city of Richfield, that's how they conduct it, Mr. Mayor, like you're suggesting. He said they don't have this problem, you know, where the applicant doesn't get the plan and doesn't get the memo, it's just here. But he said if it's done differently, because that's the way they do it in Richfield too, the mayor wouldn't allow, you know, like, anybody to come before them without having all that. So that the applicant knows, some of them are flying in, some of them are hitting the hotel. And they want to see these plans beforehand instead of getting caught off guard.
Well, the part of the problem was that we used to have meetings once a month and the volume of work that we had to do at those meetings was phenomenal. So we split them up to once every two weeks. So there was a reason because we had some applications. So we, I mean, you want to make a motion right now, somebody, that we move it to once a month?
I'll make a motion, the planning commission changes the meetings from bi-monthly to monthly.
Okay.
With the stipulations that we talked about.
Right, notification.
With the applicant receiving and as well as the commission receiving mottos way in advance.
Well, we can advance the notifications.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I guess this is, you know, if we start moving in that direction and we're here until nine o'clock once a month, maybe reconsider, you know, our time, you know, if these meetings turn into being marathon things because we only do it once a month, then we have to reconsider.
Well, if we did it twice, we're good twice.
We went to once, then went back to twice.
Yes.
Never went to once. I think we went back to twice, like you said, because.
Of the volume.
The volume.
Yeah.
But, you know, like when we're in hours and that, if it turns into two, that's cool. Turns into four, those are tortures. I'd rather go to two, two-hour meetings. But if we can keep it to a couple hours out here at seven-thirty or something like that, that's acceptable.
Well, and you know what? We always have an opening. If there is a need that we could have a special.
Special one, yeah. If something's gonna be extra, extra long and, you know, it's a two-hour issue by itself and we've also got four signs and a fence or something, we're either looking, you know, we have a special meeting for that.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have a second. Now we need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, so we'll be doing this once a month with notification going out, just the way Dennis suggests.
Which day?
A week. Which day?
Which day of the month, yeah.
Oh, you want to keep it on Monday?
Yeah, Monday, but I mean, which, you know, third Monday of the month? Second?
Well, this one's at the end of the month here, so let's.
Well, it would be better for Rita and I that it would be at a time different than the second and the fourth Thursday. So in other words, one of the Mondays in between there or you want it the week of a council? See, a council week, we have two meetings. So I'd rather not have two meetings.
So make it the third Monday, then it's between the council meetings?
It's between council meetings.
Our council meetings are second and fourth.
Right.
So if we make it the third Monday, what do you think?
Yeah, I think, because that's where we're at, that's the one we're at right now, correct? So next to you would be a month?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we got a special one coming up sooner.
Right.
Somebody knows this about.
It's already scheduled for.
Yeah, except that open.
Gas station, or don't say gas station. Open electrical.
No, there was another, what was the other one? Didn't you send me something about another one too? There's only eleven, on the eleven, yeah.
I have a question for the commission for a brief, please.
Sure, we haven't adjourned yet, so come on up.
I won't take more than like three minutes or so. I'm sure because of the manor house.
Yeah.
And I came here to sign to urge this commission to consider all the ADA standards to be met. And reading up here, the statement in person is because when Cinemark came into town, I talked with the building department and asked them if they reviewed plans for ADA. And they assured me they did. But it wasn't long after Cinemark came in that I got a call from the Department of Justice. And I was a plaintiff in a suit against Cinemark for their wheelchair seating. And I had several conference calls with them. So I'm not claiming to be an expert on ADA, but I have some experience. And I just wanted to be here to be on record and voice a few of my concerns with the manor house. And a couple of them are that the ramp that's in there, they said that their wheelchair is accessible. When this ramp was put in the manor house, I opposed it and told the city that it wasn't up to ADA standard, probably, plan on how they could do it. That's not long enough, doesn't have a landing in the bottom or at the top. And parking lots under ADA, round parking lots, just aren't acceptable. There was nothing mentioned as far as access to the second floor, such as an elevator. The other thing is the sprinkler system. I've heard that they don't want to put a sprinkler system in because of the cost and that they're going to the state to ask for a waiver. Now I would urge this commission not to let this go through without having a sprinkler system on because I put the safety of people ahead of money. And is there anything else? The other thing, I also hope I might gladly be here. I know they put up a million-dollar insurance for liability. But under the volunteer ordinance that specifically states that anybody doing volunteer work up there has to sign and file with the city a waiver of liability for it. Because when I was on home dates, we put up an insurance policy, but we were still required to fill out that liability form.
Okay.
I'm just urging this.
All good points, Mike.
One other thing.
Yeah.
He mentioned being put on a historical registry. If you're on a historical registry, you are given some latitude. And somewhat that latitude concerns accessibility. I would hope if they do get put on this historical ledger, that this commission doesn't use that to not make this house accessible.
Good point. Alright, now, Janelle, if you have any questions, alright? This gentleman is Mike Manhart, alright? If you have any questions about what he said, we can contact Mike and we can get ahold of him so that we get it in the notes. You have your recorder, so if there's a problem, fine.
I just want to go on record because of what happened to Cinemark that I deserve.
Yeah, I understand that. That was good that you came forward with that. Those are all things that have to be looked at for it to be used in the use that they intended.
Was the Cinemark determined to not be accessible?
Right, prior to them coming here, there was a lawsuit filed in Texas when they erected Cinemark. And the wheelchair seating wasn't done properly. The line of sight wasn't addressed like it should have been. And they didn't do it up here. So it's a Department of Justice did the follow suit. And they didn't really solve the problem completely, but they made it a little bit better.
And those are the kind of things where liability comes in for the city too. Because you know we're gonna be co-planted, so.
I think the waiver was like something kind of.
Yeah, that waiver we have to look into.
Building on city property could be.
Yeah, we have to look into the waivers. Mike, you made a lot of good points. Thanks, appreciate it.
What does the fire department think about that or have you?
Well, see, the, the, going down, going down and going to the fire commission to say, okay, we would like to build this without putting sprinklers in there, doesn't always turn out that they get no sprinklers. In fact, sometimes.
They need more stringent for that.
Oh, yes, sometimes you go down there and say, we don't want to put in sprinklers. That board will tell you, you're not only gonna put in sprinklers, you're gonna put little sprinkling cans in every single room of that house. I mean, that's, that's just an example. Yeah, sometimes it actually turns out worse by going down there. So there's no reason for us to fight them going down there, even though we have to go down and we have to state our case and our case is said. But just because we do that doesn't automatically mean they won't get them.
Let me ask you that. This house is owned by the city. This is the volunteer group. That's the, city owns this house. Why can't this commissioner and the city demand that this sprinklers is going to be put in? Why are you allowing them to go to the state?
Because if they go to the state, then it makes it a final that you cannot build that and it isn't political that the city is telling you, you can't do this because the mayor said so.
Yeah, but.
It's that the fire marshal says so.
To me, that doesn't political.
Well, everything's political about this because if it wasn't political, this problem would be resolved years ago. And politically, it's been a hot potato.
For over thirty years.
Thirty years. Yeah.
What is, under the two thousand and two volunteer ordinance, I think it's eleven seventy-nine point something, every volunteer, single or group, must file a form yearly with the council, president, vice president, and everything. Every year we had to do it for the home dates. Council has to approve of it. Have they filed that every year?
No, but they did file it recently.
You mean the board of directors?
Right.
Yeah, they filed it this year, but it took the city over two years ago.
Yes.
Because I think you have it, Don, I'll call.
No, we were asking for it.
I'm upfront with you. You had the EPA, you fired about asbestos in the building. You know, many people out in there are qualified to handle asbestos. You know, I had the EPA out there, quality control, did they find all those violations? I am personally going to them. And if people are allowed in there that are not certified, I'm having the federal government come after the city for violating the federal laws. I'm upfront.
Yeah, well, that's absolutely your right to do that. That's why they call us America, not Cookville, right?
Who do you talk to?
Well, don't do it on a Wednesday. I'm rough on a Wednesday, I can't, you know, or make it Tuesday or Thursday.
Whenever they come up, they come up.
Well, talk to them. Tell them.
If, if there's no other discussion about relevant planning commission and you will be in the minutes as having stated that, okay?
I just want to, I want the commission for hearing it.
Yeah, sure.
Our pleasure.
Alright, so you'll be in there. Any other business tonight? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Soon.
Oh, God.
This was a counter.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned. For a minute there, I was worried.
You can be in the middle and talk.